All right, I'm going to call to order Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole for September 2nd, 2025. Our first item is for the clerk to please call our rule.
Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner DeLuca?
Here.
Commissioner Gessler?
Yeah, I was going to say here in terms of terms of.
I'm here, yes, thank you, John.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Here.
Commissioner Mazur? Commissioner Morales? Commissioner Ray?
Present.
Chair Strats?
Here.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Here.
You have eight present.
Thank you so much, Clerk. And Commissioner Morales sends her regrets, they did experience a death in the family, so our condolences to her and her loved ones tonight. All right, we'll move next to our second item. It's our opportunity for public comment. Again, this can be made in person or by phone, you can call 855-925-2801. Enter meeting code 10748 and press star three to join the queue. It's an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes on any topic in a professional and respectful manner. Once you're recognized, please share your name and where you're from. Is there anybody wishing to join us for public comment?
Good afternoon, my name is Scott Perangeli.
Do you have a, I'm going to press the mic, there you go, excellent. Thanks for the assist, welcome.
Good afternoon, my name is Scott Perangeli, I'm the Chief Pro Tem for the Ninth Circuit Court. I'm here on behalf of Judge Shiger who is unavailable today. I didn't, as most judges, you know, like to talk a lot, I didn't prepare anything because too lengthy, because I got three minutes and I was really banking on the Powerball last night. It did not go my way, so here I am. I just wanted to thank you for the time, Judge Shiger sent out a memo on May 30th, 2025 about our budget this year. I just wanted to reiterate that what Judge Shiger is asking for in an increase is for core functions. And I know a lot of my colleagues have talked to many of you, we are not asking for bells and whistles. We are mandated to do certain things that our Supreme Court has told us to do. And some of these costs that Judge Shiger outlined, transcription fees, the added postage fees and the appellate attorney fees, we can't control. Our budget is going to be higher this year. And we want to be here to answer any questions you may have based on his memo. Either today, I noticed people here that want to speak as well, or email us, or call us. We are available to talk. Again, we are not asking for increases or bells or whistles, just core functions. But if you have a lot of questions, I brought Chad with me, because he's the numbers guy. But Judge Shiger wanted you to know that we are available if you have any questions to email or call us, and we will meet.
Thank you.
Welcome. Hi, my name is Jan Lipsey, and I live in Kalamazoo. And I have a couple of questions about funding. In light of the missions closing of their MAP situation, their surplus overrun capacity. And in light of the opening of the landing place that's scheduled in December. I'm wondering about what the status of operational funding, particularly for the landing, will be. And whether those dollars have been threatened by budget cuts at the federal level. The second one is related, and that has to do with detox services. And the loss of the detox services provided historically by the healing centers. And you're also going to look at some of the opioid settlement money this afternoon. And I just would ask that we attend to those critical needs at both detox and treatment. And I know that dollars are really tight, but I just wanted to bring those things to your attention and see whether I could get some more information. Thank you.
Good, thank you so much, and I'll follow back up with you directly as well, thank you for your comments. Welcome.
I'm Joanne O'Rourke, the Texas Township Supervisor. I am here to thank you for your ongoing partnership related to tornado recovery. And like everybody else affected by the tornadoes, Texas Township residents are continuing to rebuild. The township is using After the Storm for evaluating homeowner requests and distributing the funds that we received from the state. So far, $1.8 million in requests have been received with a current pool of funds of $300,000 to be distributed. So I would like to request that our agreement with the county be amended to allow us to allocate the remaining funds designated by the county for Texas Township to After the Storm to increase the pool of funds available in order to meet the most need possible for our residents. I will remain in the meeting and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. Is there anyone else wishing to join us for public comment? Dina, do we have anyone online?
Chair, we do not have anyone online.
Right, thank you so much. That'll bring our public comment session to an end, we'll go to item three, which is a review of accounts payable and our payroll disbursements. If I could talk this evening, well, welcome Finance Director Ryan Post. Welcome, Director.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Bishop Pro Tem. Commissioners, we have an accounts payable claims list totaling $8,287,018.94 is presented for review. Of this total, the Board of Commissioners asked to approve claims totaling $6,801,115.93. Payroll disbursements totaling $4,346,545.71 are presented for the August 29th, deleted, and general payrolls. We welcome any questions from the Board of Commissioners at this time.
Thank you, do we have questions from members? I'm seeing none. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to item four, Fiscal Year 26 Budget Discussion. And we're going to see a preview of the Administrator's Recommended Budget. And to lead us in this discussion, we'll welcome Dr. Canlin, our Administrator, Dr. Canlin.
All right, thank you, Chair, appreciate the opportunity to present a balanced budget for 2026. And this is just a preview, still a work in progress, we are still fine tuning a lot of the revenue sources and the other details that go along with this. But wanted to present what we've been working on, culmination of a lot of hard work. So we'll start the presentation and happy to answer any questions along the way. So we'll go to the next slide, please. What we'll present is an overview of our surplus, what were kind of the dollars that we're working with. We'll go into a preview of the Administrator's Recommendation. You'll see that the budget is currently balanced. And then talk about and remind the public and the board about the fund balance policies that we have in place, including the golden ratio. And then kind of go back into the what the board priorities were for, or declared for 2026, rather. Dina Monique, we're still seeing the title slide, there we go, okay, thank you. And then next slide, please. So we can go to the next slide, thank you. All right, so what we have right now, and you'll see what's presented in front of you is a general fund, operating budget, revenue is recorded at a little over 97 million. The general fund expenditures are 93 million, 93.5 million. So that leaves us with an available balance to address new funding requests of operating at two million, just over $2 million. And then we also increased dividend income by one and a half million in consultation with the Treasurer's Office to address capital needs for the county. The law enforcement fund, which is another major revenue source, is, the revenue is 18 million and the expenditures were 17 million. So that leaves us with roughly $721,000 to address law enforcement fund new funding requests. They also had a fund balance that was built up there of 718,000, which would be used for one-time capital expenses, which would be leveraged. So a CIP recommendation should hopefully come back before the board and be presented at the September 16th meeting as well. So total available funding for 2026 to address the funding requests, which includes capital and operating is 4.9 million. Next slide, please. This is just a reminder of our schedule of revenues and taxes. So really consistently, we receive and record investment revenue on a monthly basis. But then our other major revenue sources, primarily the winter taxes and the summer taxes are recorded in February and September respectively. Another, I would say, sort of consistent revenue is the state revenue sharing. And as you can see, we receive those five times throughout the year. So cash flow has not necessarily been an issue for the county, but with revenues from the federal and the state government that are anticipated to be decreased and/or eliminated. This gives you some insight into how we are planning our revenues. Next slide, please. Just a reminder of the declared 2026 board priorities overarching diversity, equity, inclusion. And then the three main priorities beyond that were public safety, employees, and then community stability. All right, next slide, please, we'll get into the meat of the presentation. While these numbers are very small for the public in the room here, we'll kind of go through each line so that we can provide some transparency. So the first preview is for public safety, so that bucket of funding that was declared as a priority by the county board, so it's Fund 266. There were new funding requests that were directly tasked to this bucket. So one is the animal services and enforcement creation of a 1FTE K104 Employee Customer Service Specialist. We have a animal services creation of a 1FTE, it's a K106, K107 Animal Services Enforcement Field Services Supervisor. Eighth District Court creation of a clerk of the court position. The Sheriff's Office requests for an increase in jail provisions. Sheriff's Office requests for medical expense increase. Sheriff's Office requests for increase of their fuel budget. Sheriff's Office creation of two FTEs responsible for technology. So their technology analyst positions will be directly tasked to various facets of technology within the Sheriff's Office. Primarily implementing their RMSGMS system as we understand it. And then Sheriff's Office requests for vehicle repair and maintenance. And then lastly, BNG creation of two FTE KCSO building custodial positions. And that they would only be assigned to the jail facility. Happy to take questions on this one.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Yeah, do we include the fringe rates for these positions?
That is correct, yeah, all of these numbers that you see presented before you have the fringe rate, they also have startup costs such as the technology if applicable, so their computers and things of that sort.
So fridge and technology?
Absolutely.
Okay, that was my, that was my main question. And then I have, I guess I'll probably wait till the end to put the other, but I did have a question on the, going back to the general, the GF revenue and the GF expenditures at 97, 93. That with the assumption of the 4.9 left for the recommendations. I guess my question is, can we look at how we get to the 9.3 and 9.7? Because I think especially with positions, and I think you're probably going to talk about that, the vacancies and positions and everything later. But I think narrowing that, especially the 93, 591, I think that's, that on the expenditure side, that's where we as a board need to take a really hard look at. And see, is it really going to be 93, 591? Can we narrow that down, especially if we get later in this budget process and we get to things that we want, that we just, you know, we run out of funding for a priority? That's where you can, as a board, that's where you're going to find it, but that's it.
No, thank you, Vice Chair, so for everyone's clarity too, a vice chair is referring to is that the 93.5 million in expenditures general fund, that does include position vacancies. So to the tune of about four and a half million dollars, and we will get into that later. So that's what he's referring to, not the discrepancy between the 93 and the 97. It's the fact that the 93 million in expenditures includes vacancies, so yes, Chair.
Thank you, Administrator, just one of the line items, the funding for medical expense increase in the Sheriff's Office. Those have been escalating quite dramatically. And I wonder, is the amount recommended here, the totality of what the Sheriff's Office had requested, had support for medical expenses? Or what did their request initially come forward at? I noticed in our current claims, I mean, we spent, I think it was 26,000 dollars just this month on prescription costs in the jail. And we can always follow back up later if need be, Administrator.
Oh, no, no problem, Chair, sorry, I just had to pull up a different spreadsheet. So it appears that they requested $75,000. So we honored the totality of the request, it was Priority Six on their list, but it was 75,000, we were able to accommodate.
Okay, thank you so much, Administrator.
All right, if there are no other questions, we can move on to the next slide and continue on, and happy to always go back. This is a, I'm not sure, you know, at the top, actually, it's, there's a typo, this should be operating, not public safety preview capital. Should be operating, but we'll correct that moving forward, the actual table itself does present as operating. This is for, within the public safety bucket, a creation of a 1FTE Emergency Management Specialist. The dollar amount on here is offset by revenue from the city of Portage, they are potentially approving an agreement to fund half of this position. So while you see that the position funded is $78,400, another 40,000 would come back to the county to help offset some of those costs. And the county is really responsible for roughly $40,000 of that. And again, this is an operating expense, not a capital, we'll correct that moving forward. All right, next slide, please. All right, this one is supposed to be, I see the slides were switched, that was the issue. This one is supposed to be capital, so as you see, the table below does refer to it as capital, it's the actual title that doesn't. So we'll correct that moving forward. This was a new funding request from the Eighth District Court, so utilizing that fund balance within the law enforcement fund, we were able to accommodate one of their requests to upgrade their on-base upkeep and upgrades. And that's their, that's the system they use for their court dockets and all of that, that sort of thing. So that's a $297,000 project, and then there would be annual maintenance that would be baked into their budgets moving forward through 2027 and onward. All right, next slide, please. The next board priority was employees, so that's a general fund bucket. And so there are a myriad of accommodations that we were able to address here. The first one being finance employee training. Over the years, any increases related to, let's say, things like the audit, grant management systems, those sort of costs, they've just been absorbed within the finance budget at the expense of employee training. And so they've requested employee training, so that's why that's in their direct relation to employees and ensuring that they have the professional development and skills that they need to perform the job. IT is requesting an IT administrative assistant, which will likely be like an operations manager to ensure that they are staying on budget, that they're planning accordingly. And ensuring that we're on a smooth path forward as we lost a position due to retirement in that department. Playing development would reclassify, they're seeking to reclassify a position from a GIS specialist to a GIS analyst. Human resources, creation of a performance management HR specialist. So this position would be focused solely on performance evaluations and ensuring that employees have the tools that they need to succeed in their jobs. BNG creation of a 1FTE K109 Office Manager Position. This would be a position in charge of ensuring that invoices are paid timely, that their asset programs are being implemented properly, that sort of thing. To ensure that they're the most efficient as possible as they maintain and renovate buildings. The Clerk's Office, a reclassification of an election specialist to an elections manager. And that just goes to show that they need that expertise and that experience. This position is actually offset by an increase in revenue that they've been generating in the office, so it's really a cost neutral. We've already baked that into the budget on the revenue side. Communications aligning with the strategic plan is hiring another communication specialist to handle a lot of the social media. So that the other communication specialists can focus on other facets of the department with just regards to the communication standards that we're trying to set. Finance, there was a position that was allocated within the senior village to handle accounting. This would move the funding back to the general fund out of the village, so that the senior village can actually reach more individuals in that population. And then lastly, park seasonal budget wages, as you know, the county board endeavored, I believe it was in, I think it took effect 2023. But endeavor to increase the county minimum wage, parks through their fee schedule just can't keep pace with the increase in wages, so they need general fund support to keep pace with those in the amount of $20,000. Any questions on employees?
Oh, I wasn't on, sorry. Just so the community hears, I'd like to see each department that are approved these positions have their position description and ready to go so that they can hire these people in January and February. And they don't create the position sometime in July. We fund it and budget it for the full year, and we only spend half of the year's money on this position because the departments didn't even get it filled until July. So I guess these new positions, I'd like to see starting sometime early in the beginning of the year so that we can keep on top of our budget.
Thanks for that, elevating that, Vice Chair. And that's a challenge to the department heads to meet that challenge. And let's get these bodies as they move through the process in the door, serving the community, go ahead, Administrator.
Absolutely, and to respond to that, so with every position that's in here, they've already gone through the SEAGUL evaluator, they've already gone through the JDQ process and have been sort of teed up to be approved at the time that the budget is approved. So typically, what we've done historically is a separate board action would come back like in December, and it just doesn't make any sense. We're going to have the actual item report and the action item teed up as right along with the budget so that departments can start recruiting now with the position start date of January 2nd. Or soon thereafter, so that way we're not delaying the timeline on that. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so this community stability bucket, we have three requests that are attributed to that bucket. So MSU Extension, they requested funding support in the amount of $4,000. Planning and Development, creation of a Sustainability Manager Position. And then lastly, a very big one is a BNG operating cost allocation. As you know, with the building footprint that we maintain, BNGs, their expenses and the revenues are associated there too, just have not kept up with pace. And I think, you know, obviously, this can certainly be adjusted, but just goes to show that we've got a lot of deferred maintenance that has to be taken care of. And especially with adding the landing place, there's a lot of activity there, yes, Vice Chair?
Yeah, that question, so this is an ongoing cost, it's not for like automation or anything else, this is an ongoing operational cost increase?
That is correct, Vice Chair, ongoing operation, yep. Okay, all right, next slide, please. And again, we can, you know, this discussion isn't over after we advance slides, we can always go back, and I know that we will. So then, you know, there are always operational items that fall outside of the board's declared board priorities. And especially those that new funding requests may not align with board priorities in such a way, but they still align with the strategic plan. So every new funding request has direct tie-in to the strategic plan. So under this operational, the General Fund 101 priority is operational enhancements. And so $675 worth of enhancements, communications, it's to improve our site for accessibility, digital governance and website modernization. BNG has increase of utility costs, so that line is in there. The Clerk's Office has renewed funding for funding levels for early voting, for the early voting operations. That is directly also offset, there are local funding, there's a local funding agreement where the local units actually pay that back to the county. So that's really a cost neutral item, but we want to recognize and memorialize it into the budget because we still have the expense. Drain Commissioner has a small increase of $4,000 for item for office supplies. Um, drain commissioner has a small increase of four thousand dollars for item, uh, for office supplies. As you know, they have new employees, so their, their office supplies just aren't keeping pace with, with the number of employees they have. Uh, strategic planning implementation, again, could be, uh, adjusted, but we have a hundred and twenty baked in for that. And then circuit court, uh, as they were just talking about, uh, this evening, uh, and came and advocated, uh, they have an increase in their fifty three thousand uh, so far.
Yeah, the circuit court, so as they said, these are just mandatory expenses that they have. Out of the four hundred thousand, you've allocated fifty three thousand, and, and that's just, that's gonna be continuation of their expenses.
Yeah, that, no.
Being addressed a little further?
Yeah, it's a great question, so, I mean, you'll see as we go through the recommendation, it's, you, 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 you take and you give from something. So, uh, that's why I wanted to present the preview, I know that there are advocates from every department, um, you know, we wanted to present something, so they did get something, it would be ongoing, operational, uh, you know, dollars. But yeah, I mean, everyone's experiencing, uh, increased costs across the board, and, you know, departments have to adjust within their, their line items. And I know that they have to, but this is just kind of where we landed for now, so.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair. Yeah, mine was similar question, I, I see that we're hitting the edge of it, but, um, so we're having to, uh, have departments kind of figure out how to, do so, do everything with nothing, huh? I guess, I'm, I'm an expert in that field, I've been doing it for years, but.
Okay, um, I have a question on the strategic issues, the strategic plan implementation. Who, who did our strategic plan? We had it done a couple of years ago, correct?
Yeah, so Allison Brunet Consulting.
Allison Brunet.
She's out of Wisconsin, Wisconsin.
And then I, I, I only mention this because there are strategic issues the last, you know, three or four years, we've never, we've never, I don't think, gone over ten percent of what we've budgeted in strategic issues, it's usually two fifty or two seventy. And usually, we spend about twenty or thirty thousand each year out of that. Um, increasing that strategic issues for the implementation one twenty, uh, hundred and twenty K. Is, is that really, I mean, can't we just do it with what we currently not spend in our strategic issues account? Or is that something we can look at, maybe?
I, I, yeah, I think Vice Chair is something that we can certainly look at, I think this hundred and twenty thousand dollars is, uh, Deputy Administrator Cole, uh, sort of gathered a lot of the, the intel and data around this, um, to implement portions of strategic plan, we do need funding. I think that it's really about the pace, um, we can slow down a little bit. So I, I, I think this number could certainly be adjusted, absolutely, we can go back to the drawing board and.
And if we are to trim from this number a little bit, I guess my recommendation would be what Commissioner DeLu and Commissioner Hepler said. If we could give, uh, trim that down a little bit and give the circuit court a little bit more relief, I think that might go a long way with them. But that's my only comment.
Sorry about that, I wanted to take a note for the, on my, on my live document, so yeah, we can, we'll go back to the drawing board on that, not a problem, absolutely. That, that's why we wanted to have this discussion tonight, so, uh, no worries. Um, all right, next slide, please. All right, the second to last, uh, item here is administrative focus around capital improvement, so four oh one. So as I, uh, mentioned earlier, we increased the dividend income by one and a half million. The reason why we tasked it to capital improvements is because we can kind of monitor that, uh, throughout the year, and we can adjust accordingly as projects are being scheduled. And so right now, we've budgeted one and a half million, so that'd be a B N G capital account increase, so that's the four oh one. Um, and those projects still go through the C I P and then are ultimately approved by the board, but that would be at one point two four million. And then we did a Parks and Expo Center, a, a capital account increase of two hundred sixty thousand. Again, those, uh, line items would be adjusted accordingly, depending on how revenue's coming in, so that we don't go over budget on capital. And again, those are approved by the capital improvement, or recommended by the capital improvement committee, and then ultimately approved by the Board of Commissioners, which we hope to have, uh, that recommendation ready for the sixteenth. Oh, yes.
Really quick, I, just to be fair, I nitpicked you on the last one, this one is actually, I'm a big, big, strong proponent of this. I think this, uh, um, this is the way to go, it's a true estimation of what we're going to get in our dividend accounts. And it's not tying it into positions, but it's tied in into capital. And then also, we're doing something for the first time that we don't, haven't done in Kalamazoo County in a number of years, is budget capital improvement. Um, I, I think we need to start putting more of that onto our budget, so that we can have long-term planning for it year on and year out. But yeah, I'm a big proponent of this one.
All right, thank you so much, I appreciate the comments, Vice Chair. And then, uh, next slide, please. The last item is a result of a regular board meeting item that, uh, you all approved. Uh, it's on the, I believe it was on the, uh, August nineteenth meeting, if I recall. I wish I would have put that on here, I'll update that for next time, because now I can't remember which meeting it was either. The, the first meeting in August or the second meeting in August, but I have the civic clerk item number. And it's for ongoing, uh, operational revenue to support expenses associated with the Office of Community Corrections, uh, opioid settlement funding request to support their criminal justice, uh, clinician contract. So we baked that into the budget to memorialize it out of Fund, uh, two eighty four, uh, from the opioid settlement fund is fifty thou- fifty six thousand two hundred dollars. And so, just wanted to, uh, uh, make sure that was transparent and clear on that. Next slide, please. This is just a reminder of the, how we, uh, divvy up the golden ratio, the unanticipated unallocated fund balance. So that's just a, uh, representation there. Next slide, please. Utilizing the, um, operating revenues, so that was that ninety seven point one million dollars that was on the, uh, third slide of this presentation. Uh, we see that a twenty percent to twenty twenty five percent general fund balance ratio is nineteen to twenty four million. We know then that our remaining unrestricted undecided fund balance from twenty twenty four was twenty nine million eight hundred sixty seven thousand and two hundred six dollars. We would recommend a cautious approach utilizing the twenty five percent ratio, knowing that we have issues, uh, with federal and state funding, uh, that are looming over us. So that would leave us with a golden ratio amount of five points, a little over five point five mil- well, it's almost five point six million dollars. And so, next slide, please. What that, uh, what this representation is, is it kind of shows you how that funding is then divvied up, uh, between the various buckets of fleet. Um, large capital, capital and board, board priorities, so those change slightly, uh, as we, uh, uh, modified the revenue from the last presentation. And so, um, you see that the first two buckets are one point one million, and then the latter two capital and board priorities are one point six. And so what we anticipate during the budget process is also memorializing these transfers, so that the funding is not just sitting in general fund balance, but is actually being put to use. The one that's not necessarily, that sort of does, I would say, sit in fund balances the board priorities, until the board declares where that money is, uh, tasked to, then we actually restrict it. So we, we just have to have some, uh, turner some direction around that, that one point six million.
Vice Chair.
Um, yeah, is there a, um, a goal of the fund for six thirteen or fleet fund? Is there a goal of what we wanted to, 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 to get that, that fund to, and then we would taper that down? Or is that going to be a continuum, we're going to need about a million dollars a year into that fleet fund? I know we needed to build it up, but isn't there a point where the, what we put into it will be de minimis or, or last each year?
You know, that, that's a great question, Vice Chair, I think, you know, Board of Commissioners, there is, I, I think our intent is to build up that fund to support, yeah, fleet and, and just B N G in general. So six thirteen is, is, uh, can support a lot of the, the deferred maintenance, uh, the T and M contracts, the things that they need to do, uh, to ensure that, you know, uh, employees have safe working conditions, and obviously that our visitors do too. And so, I don't know if there's necessarily a number that we need to hit, but I think if the fund balance, yeah, absolutely, if it gets too high, I think that it, it's something to, to, to certainly review and taper back as, as we can. Deputy Administrator Cole, uh, can provide more context.
Please, Deputy Administrator.
Thank, thank you, um, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, uh, Chair Pro Tem. Um, very specifically in the central stores fund regarding fleet in particular, there's two main drivers. Uh, one is the law enforcement, uh, there is a percentage of vehicles that have to be purchased every year. Uh, that cost of those vehicles i- is increasing significantly, as is the volume of purchase. So, uh, out of that, around four hundred thousand would be straight for law enforcement. And right now, um, the impact of the enterprise leasing program, the lease costs are also coming out of the central stores. So, uh, right now, that's about, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand. So I think the, the million dollars each year, because we also do vehicle replacements, uh, unfortunately, there are accidents. Uh, we get some reimbursement from M M R M A, uh, when that happens, but then we have to do a repurchase. So that little delta that's there, uh, the, the one million dollars is pretty spot on for what we'll need long, long term. Uh, in the ramp-up of the program, though, we did have, uh, a, a balance, so we can, you know, um, dip into that. Uh, but ongoing, that's about the number that we, we will, we will definitely want to be able to allocate each year.
Okay, would, would it make sense to sort of, I guess, almost reverse engineer that sort of thing? Where you have a, uh, fund balance, that there's a policy that it can't dip below, let's just come up with a number one point five million dollars. That way, you can see and have a true cost, if it's always at one point five and it gets below, you put money in, then you can have a true cost of what your operational costs are each year, so you could better plan for it and.
I, I think so, and then I think a true up of what that number is, because again, the escalating costs and then the usage rate, um, uh, of law enforcement and the need of our communities, sometimes the burn rate on those vehicles, um, goes up. And so, that number would potentially have to be, uh, reviewed. Uh, there is a vehicle replacement strategy, uh, and that was also, uh, renewed and reviewed, so their number for replacement increased. So that's something, um, great idea, thinks a wonderful idea, uh, but I think periodically, that also would need to be, uh, adjusted due to cost and, uh, lack of an elegant term, burn rate of, of vehicles.
You need to smooth that out over five to ten years, we just started this.
We just started the program.
So it would be something we'd look at at about six or seven years from now, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you all, thank you.
Uh, Vice Chair Pro Tem.
Thank you, don't go away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Administrator, um, yeah, my question was on the fleet thing too, um, and I understand the sheriff's department and their need, uh, and cost for vehicles and, um, and you're saying about four hundred thousand goes for, uh, basically to that. I know that we have a rental program now, and I kind of am very intently watching that. I'm not a big fan of renting, all right, I, I think it's not a good route to go down, but we gotta do what we gotta do. And I'm kind of curious as to making sure that, uh, that that is the right road to travel, be that we're not, that we don't have vehicles for, uh, our other facilities, but, uh, basically, we got four hundred thousand, and then we got six hundred thousand that was going into what would be rental vehicles, uh, for the rest of the, the, rest of the departments. Uh, that would include our building of grounds and the parks and those folks that utilize a number of vehicles for plowing the parking lots and, uh, those type of operations. So, um, I'm curious, I realize this is probably too soon to ask that question. Is this the right road to travel, or should we be looking more at purchasing the vehicles? Longevity-wise, uh, there's a lot of studies going out that show that take-home cars for police officers, uh, usually, they last longer and they're better maintained, so, uh, a little bigger bang for the buck. They don't get damaged as much as to, opposed to, uh, this shift uses them, the third shift uses them, second shift uses them, whatever. So, I guess I'm concerned that, that we want to keep an eye on this fleet thing, um, and see if this rental idea is the right way to go, uh, because you put plows on trucks, uh, uh, you gotta have the right size truck to have a plow on it, uh, and, uh, for it to do the work, it needs to be, that needs to be done. So, uh, I'm hoping that we're gonna keep a real close eye on fleet, uh, fleet policy, uh, money here, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, um, uh, Vice Chair Pro Tem. Uh, what we certainly can do, and I think it's, uh, highly appropriate, um, at, at a time of the board's choosing, that we give an update of the program itself. Um, so far in the short term, it is, uh, actually paid significant dividends, uh, but we would gladly love to be able to make that, make that case. Uh, the other thing that I think is important to note is that there is an annual analysis of the vehicle usage. And so, uh, the fleet committee does review those, and then also makes a recommendation, should a vehicle be purchased out of its lease, or if it's just inappropriate from that perspective. The part of the elements of the program also is the resale of the vehicle. Uh, and then the equity of that vehicle gets rolled down into the full lease payment across the, the, the county. So, um, the delta between the cost, as you all know, uh, from purchasing a new car and leasing, it's, it's, it's minimal. But we were able to, through the lease payment, uh, refresh the entire fleet of the county. Um, it was truly, uh, bubble gum and duct tape for a lot of vehicles. Um, a lot of them were inherited from, uh, the sheriff's office on its last leg. Uh, uh, Parks was, uh, really the poster child for that, uh, and we were able to refresh the entire fleet, uh, for the cost of, you know, what we were buying four or five vehicles. So, that's just something in perspective, and when there is a vehicle that's, uh, kind of outside of that, um, that price point, uh, of making it, uh, of value, meaning we're burning it more than, than necessary, we have the opportunity to purchase that vehicle for the remaining value, and then have to maintain it, so, um, the vehicle is paying dividends. Again, would love to, um, you know, show that, uh, short-term report, uh, but we, we do do that analysis every single, every single year, uh, with the fleet committee, so. Thank you.
Oh, boy, so you come up and then you get popular.
And, and, and you mean me.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, uh, Terrell, could you, I, I know you said it before, and probably Kevin has too, but not all vehicles, not all county vehicles are part of this leasing program. Just in twenty-five words or less, who gets left out, which ones are not?
So not, well, everyone has the opportunity to participate in it, um, but the largest, uh, that does not is the sheriff's patrol vehicles. Um, but some of the other vehicles that they do use, like their training vehicle, uh, they are using the, the, the lease program for that as well. Um, and there are just certain characteristics in terms of a- average miles, uh, the, the burn rate, again, of the, of the patrol vehicles does not necessarily make it the, uh, the best, uh, you know, a use, but some of that is because of what was pointed out. Uh, the shifts, you know, the amount of idling that they, that they do with a larger fleet, some of those calculations would, would, would change a little bit. But right now, purchasing, uh, it's kind of untenable.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Administrator. You look like you're cleared, thank you. Thank you, Administrator.
Absolutely, all right, we're, we're back at it, uh, next slide, please. A great, great, uh, questions, by the way, that's why we, we love having these, uh, this dialogue with you, so. It would actually be quite boring if we didn't have this dialogue, we wouldn't know what to do, so no, this is great. Um, so this is, these, these last slides are just, uh, really reminders about some of the current considerations on the horizon. So obviously, we've talked about H H W, the household hazardous waste, rather, uh, the landing place, the downtown parking garage, the future of the administration building, uh, courtroom expansion, uh, jail rehabilitation project, retiree benefits, and employee non-medical benefit enhancements as that kind of comes, uh, along in the, the near future. Uh, next slide, please. Just a reminder of what the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty nine strategic plan goals are. So, goals three, four, six, and seven are really, uh, what are next in the queue to address, uh, along with the others, obviously. But, uh, these were just in the timeline, so we wanted to just remind everyone of that. And then, our second to last slide, uh, so next slide, please. Just our management principles, uh, principles, so you know, as we're, uh, drafting this budget, we're thinking about smart growth, uh, investing versus spending, and I'll change this now, I keep, uh, it's just a cautious approach, so it'll be changed for next time. But cautious approach, uh, designed to ensure service and, uh, maintain employment of county employees. So, um, we really, uh, developed a funding strategy around board priorities, the strategic plan, and, uh, our management principles, and that's what's, uh, driven us to where we are today. Um, and the last slide is questions and discussion. And I just remind you that we plan on having the budget book live, uh, September sixteenth, so with this information, we're basically there. I'll make some additional adjustments, and that does not mean that that's the final document. Uh, the timeline that we have is the sixteenth, still have these same discussions. Uh, we'll have on October, I believe it is the sixth, uh, the seventh, rather. Uh, we'll have another budget discussion, we'll likely have the public hearing set for that day for the, uh, budget. Uh, for, for the budget for the public to opine on it, so we'll likely set that. for the public to opine on it. So we'll likely set that public hearing, uh, throughout the approval process on the, the September sixteenth board agenda for this, uh, for the seventh. And then, uh, what we will have is an approval of the budget on, uh, potentially and hopefully on October twenty-first. Uh, and this really, that timeline allows HR especially to make all of the changes to the payroll, um, effective January first of, uh, twenty twenty-six. So happy to take any questions about any and all, uh, contents of this presentation.
Thanks, Chair.
Um, yeah, thank you very much for this. Um, October twenty-first, uh, we might beat the state. Uh, but that's inside joke for folks. Um, but, um, I, I guess, um, this is, you know, it's a substantial B and G operating cost increase. Um, I think we need that. Um, I, you know, we, they've been going on, on a kind of a shoestring budget with the CIP stuff. I would, my preference is to see that more into a CIP as opposed to just general operating costs, but that's getting, I guess, getting, uh, nitpicky. Um, the Park and Expo Center capital account increase, um, of the two, two sixty, that's, that's into the capital improvement plan, right? For CIP stuff?
Yes.
For, for parks. Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm good with that. Um, the gist of this, I, you know, I, you know, we're just getting it, but I've, I've got no major qualms or nick major, uh, problems with it. Um, all the, uh, positions do, you said, do increase, uh, do include the, uh, fringe benefits and the startup costs. So I'm gonna, you know, go through this, but I think this is a start. Um, I would like to see the, the, the budget book, um, so that I can take a real deep dive in the expenditure of the revenue side. I do think we can squeeze a little bit of money, um, out of the cannabis tax, um, that, that we've got in there. I think that's a little bit light on the, um, predictions. But just for the most part, I think we're there. I think commissioners, keep in mind what your priorities are. Um, and as we get close to the end, I think we can find small amounts of money. So I'm good.
Uh, Commissioner Gessler and then Commissioner Wheeler.
Thank you, Chair. It's, uh, not a question, uh, Kevin. It's an observation for our county's constituents and for us as a group. And that is, we are really gonna have to prioritize this year. We can't afford to try to do everything we've always done for everybody all the time. So there're gonna be some tough decisions coming up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wheeler.
Thank you, Chair.
I printed that myself.
Um, uh, first of all, thank you. That was a fantastic presentation and I'm right there with Vice Chair that it's, um, really, really quite there. Um, I just want to say thank you for this, um, uh, these spreadsheets on position vacancies. This is really enlightening. Some of these have been open for over a thousand days and that's something that we're gonna have to drill down and figure out of maybe, you know, we can combine positions and look at salaries and try to get these positions filled.
Vice Chair.
And I, I do want to also make a commitment out, out there. One of our priorities is law enforcement. Um, we do need to look at these position vacancies that have been o- open for, as Commissioner Wheeler said, a thousand days. Um, it makes it difficult, but budget went of, as Administrator said, ninety-three million dollars in expenditures, five million dollars of it is positions that no real person exists and it's been open for five years. It, it makes it really difficult to give wage increases to the employees that are showing up. It makes it difficult to do all this stuff. But another thing that we've never really done in the county is budget overtime. And we've got to make sure that we have, uh, budgeted overtime for departments that use it as we ta- as these positions start to shrink and decrease. And some departments you'd utilize overtime more than others, we need to make sure that we're not, I mean, departments in the past have had these positions unfilled so they can use them for overtime. That's, that's just not good budgeting practice from a financial standpoint. And we're, we're doing best practices. We're changing the culture and we're doing this slowly. And as we do that, we want to make sure that we don't, you know, bite off our nose to save our face, so to speak, that we make sure that as these, we're making these changes, that departments are made whole and their, their overtime, uh, commitments and everything else. But I do absolutely agree with you. Having positions open for vacant for a thousand days is, it's ludicrous. It's absolutely crazy. But.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll, I'll add to that, you know, um, just speaking to that, you know, culture change and the manner we are budgeting, we have been budgeting overtime in the most current cycle. We're under budgeting it, um, but we are reflecting it now. And I think that's the right direction. And to move, uh, further, you know, when we look at some of these, uh, extended vacancies later, um, you know, in our regular session, we'll receive some of our annual reports, one of them from HR. And you can see there the level of turnover as well in departments. And you'll see that, um, you know, the rate of turnover within the sheriff's office, uh, much, much, much higher than other, uh, departments. And along with our cost of overtime, most of it is realized within the sheriff's office. So I just want to recognize that that's not only a budgetary concern, but that is really the wear and tear on the employee, on the deputies, on people that, you know, we are counting on to protect the community, but also interact with a vulnerable population, um, serving time within our local jail. Um, and so we do need to be mindful both in, you know, the financial components of that. But how do we recruit, support and create a stabilized workforce, uh, within the sheriff's office? It's a big concern to be aware of as we go forward. Commissioner Dul.
Yeah, kind of along those lines. I'm having a hard time accepting, I mean, it's, it's hard enough to fill and keep positions, but we're funding hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of new positions. And I guess I'd really like to know how necessary are some of these new positions. And although I understand where they're coming from with the senior millage, changing the employee from the senior millage to the finance department. I mean, of course, my feeling is we got a millage paying for a position of over ninety-three thousand dollars that, you know, we keep it there, keep our money in the county. But that, some of these, um, job descriptions, like Vice Chair said, I guess I'd like to see them. Because how necessary are they? And are we gonna be able to fill?
Yeah. Thank you for that feedback, Commissioner Dul. And those are questions obviously worth, uh, getting the answers to as we evaluate, make decisions in the budget. Are there any other questions? Administrator, thank you.
Yes. So Chair, just to respond about the positions, we can reach out to the departments that have been, uh, prelim- preliminarily, uh, recommended positions for the FY twenty-six budget, obviously subject to, uh, full board approval. And we can have them, um, put together, um, you know, uh, kind of their rationale as to why the positions are needed. So that can make, help you all make an informed decision of advance those. That's, uh, shouldn't be a problem for us. Um, there was something else, but I'll likely think of it later. Um, it's something that I was gonna have ready for nine sixteen, but I just don't remember at this time, but I will, uh, I'll follow up. So.
Thank you, Administrator. Commissioner Gessler.
Thanks again, Chair. This, uh, thought just occurred to me, uh, the, oh, was it a three-minute video that, uh, you put out concerning the budgeting process, among other things? And, uh, I, I thought that was extremely well done. So whoever it was that did the, the scripting and everything else, uh, it was, it was extremely well done. The only question that I would have is at one point in there, uh, you said that the baseline is where we start and that's what we spent last year on every department. We should at least look at the possibility of zero-based budgeting and making each department, it'll be easy for most of them, justify their own existence and then talk about the money they're gonna spend, especially if we're gonna be in a realm of prioritizing everything. Thank you.
Nothing further on the budget at this time. We're gonna move to item five. We have some other items for discussion, first being, uh, discussion regarding the remaining Texas Charter Township weather-related disaster relief funding allocation. And we're gonna open this up to, uh, some board discussion. We know that, uh, as we've heard from, um, Supervisor O'Rourke during a public comment, uh, it is the request of, uh, Texas Township that the remaining roughly twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, go to after the storm, can address the needs of residents on private property. The money they had received from us, uh, was used to mitigate issues on public property. Uh, they've expended what they could and needed there, uh, and the remaining funds, um, need to be determined on what we will do with next. Um, so open that up to some discussion from board members. Vice Chair.
Abby, I'm gonna make you talk first next time I see you. Um, yeah, I, my, my view is we're gonna have probably multiple storms. This is twenty-seven thousand dollars. I'd rather just put it in a pot and wait for the, the next storm than, than use it for private property. That being said, I, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars. I'm not gonna lose sleep over which direction this board goes. So that, that, my vote is to keep it into a pot for the next storm. But if we want to put it to after the storm, I'm okay with that too. I mean, that's just my leaning vote.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I mean, Supervisor O'Rourke said, there've been one point eight million dollars in requests for folks who, um, need relief. And I mean, I think putting the twenty-seven thousand dollars towards that, I mean, what else are we here for other than the people? So.
Vice Chair.
I would respond to that. We're here to, uh, prioritize public infrastructure dollars, not necessarily private homeowners expenses. That being said, um, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars. So I'm not gonna, I'm, it's not gonna be my heel to die on. But, um, yeah, but it, I'd rather use it for, um, next year if, uh, Parchment or, uh, Charleston Township or something has a tornado or has some sort of weather disaster relief that we use it for public, uh, infrastructure. That's my.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I think one of the considerations, I mean, we're, we're not talking about a significant amount of money. We have allocated funds to after the storm to mitigate concerns in private property otherwise. The issue, you know, is also, it's sort of twofold in my thinking. It's one about how prepared are we, um, for future storm response. We're watching the frequency of the storms increase, the severity of them increase. Um, often, you know, we have worked to try to target, uh, remediation into pockets of the community where there's significant, uh, economic disparity or homeowners may not have the resources, the insurance, they may not be owners of property, uh, to mitigate the loss of their possessions or damages. Um, and that may be the case with, uh, some of the private property owners, uh, who've put in requests to Texas Township. Um, but many, uh, you know, of the, the properties are, um, you know, have a, a high taxable value in that sector of the, the county. Um, so we do need to be mindful about having a plan long-term about what we do to mitigate and respond to disasters because they will continue to occur. Um, and when government property is impacted, if we don't have the rest, uh, money to then be responsive to that, that impacts every member, uh, of that local jurisdiction or of the county. See, Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Pro Temp.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, I, I don't feel that probably any of, any governmental entities in our county are really prepared for major disasters. Major disasters come and they don't have to be huge, but a small community like Schoolcraft or Augusta or Richland, uh, um, doesn't have a huge budget to start with. And you have a major storm comes through, you have to clear trees, you have to make sure that your infrastructure's up and running, your water, your sewer, your fire departments and those things are able to respond to the calls to their citizens. When they get overwhelmed, then they go to their, basically to the next step up, which is the county. And when the county basically gets overwhelmed, which we kind of were, uh, back, uh, two years ago, and then again, even this year, uh, then we go to the state. And when they basically get overwhelmed, they go to the federal government, FEMA. All those things take time. The problem is you don't have a lot of time to restore sewer and water and roads so that you can get people to the hospital that are in need. Uh, these things have to be done quickly. So we kind of really need to plan for emergencies. We need to have some money set aside that we can draw on to help out our citizens, our businesses, our communities, uh, to protect life and property. Um, yeah, we want to make sure that everybody gets taken care of appropriately. But we really need to have some planning in there for emergency management. And that's the, the bottom line is that there needs to be some monies there, um, so that we can partner up with, and we, we've done a great job of that. The City of Portage, the City of Kalamazoo, uh, our local govern- our local entities have stepped in to help out, um, with medical services, firefighting equipment, um, road equipment and loaders and dump trucks to move, uh, huge amounts of material off the roads and, and hopefully off of people's homes and stuff. So, but I'm really going to be very strongly supporting, you know, having us try to set up something. Doesn't have to be a huge pop, but something that, that's available for the county to step in and help all those jurisdictions, uh, as a need arise, so that we keep this a great place to live, work and play.
Yeah. I'm gonna go to Commissioner Mazur and then Dul. We'll come back to Commissioner Wheeler.
Thank you. Um, my preference would be to honor their request. Um, they've been through an awful lot and, um, I just, I, I think it's a fair request. So that would be my choice.
Thank you, Commissioner Dul.
I'm just asking some of these senior members of the board, would this be precedent-setting or is the county allocated funds to private property owners in the past?
Vice Chair, anyone more specific?
Um, yeah, it, it's not precedent-setting. We have, as the Chair had said, we have done this in the past. If, if it was precedent-setting, I'd be a hard no. Um, but it's such a small amount that I'm okay with. I mean, I'm just leaning towards a no. So, I mean, I just, in my, fundamentally, I just think the governmental money should be used for governmental infrastructure, not private properties. But it's twenty-seven thousand dollars.
I'm gonna go to Commissioner Gessler, uh, first, uh, and then welcome to Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you. I, uh, I understand everything that John is saying. And I guess the question I would ask is if twenty-seven is peanuts, how about a hundred and twenty-seven? How about three twenty-seven? Where do you draw the line? So I'm definitely in favor of government receiving the benefit of taxpayers' dollars. And that's a cruel thing to say to private owners that are indeed hurting. But, you know, I, I guess that's where I come down, you know? How, how do you draw the line? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gessler. Commissioner Wheeler, thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. Um, and just so, uh, you're aware, I've seen Director Brandy James in action from emergency management, doing a lot of the legwork. She came to Texas Township actually and, um, did some training there. Um, so there is a lot of work behind the scenes that she and her department is doing with administration to, to better prepare our county for these disasters that are gonna continually happen. So there's definitely a lot going on behind the scenes. Um, forgive my ignorance, uh, I don't know, Vice Chair or Administrator, you know this, how did Portage give money to after the storm for their residents? Did they, they didn't give money to after the storm for their residents? I'm just, I'm just curious because I think they, I was thinking if they did something similar, was it Pavilion? It, it wouldn't be like we're the only ones who are doing this. So I guess that's my, my perspective.
We'll do some research on that. Uh, Commissioner Ray.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know if you are keeping tally, but I will support honoring the request.
As Administrator, um, is reviewing. As Administrator is reviewing what other municipalities may have done to address private property owners, I wanna get a sense of where we're at. Board is, Administration is just looking for consensus from the board. This will come before us for a formal vote at a future meeting, so we'll have another opportunity to engage in debate and vote on a formal action. I think I'm seeing Commissioner, Vice Chair, sorry.
I've got an idea that might help you because I will make a motion that will more than likely, I think it will fail three to three or four to four and then, then Administration can put it on the consent agenda to probably go to after the storm afterwards after my motion fails, if that's.
You, you have the purview to enter a motion at any time?
I would make a motion that we take the, the leftover money committed for the Texas Township to be placed in a separate fund, thank you, John Kern, to be placed in a separate fund to be used for future disaster relief. And this is, this motion is to not honor their request.
Motion made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Protem Pepler, take the $27,000 and from Texas Township's allocation and place it into a separate disaster relief fund. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gessler.
Yes, I'd like to see that motion include the dichotomy between private and governmental that wasn't mentioned anywhere in there.
I think it was, my belief was that it was implied that it was only for government because going with after the storm would then do the, the private. My motion is for the government version of it, I guess is to put it that, that way. The dollars would only be used for future disaster relief for governmental entity. But I don't anticipate it passing.
Is that, we're, we're gonna make John, you know, go gray over there. So is that an amendment to the motion, Vice Chair?
I don't think it, the motion needs to be amended. Is that okay, Commissioner Gessler? Okay, I don't think that, I think it was clarified, I don't think it needs to be amended.
We do, too many?
Madam Chair.
Counsel, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. As this is the committee of the whole, it's the custom of this body to only deal with actionable items during its regular session, I would suggest that you either move this to the regular session after, but I think preferably your next regular session for September 16. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Let's just do a show of hands then. We've got the Supervisor of Texas Township. I don't wanna make her stay and wait till seven o'clock and, and do this. Can we do a show of hands then, Counsel? Is that okay?
Madam Chair, what the Vice Chair's asking for is a simple whip. It's not official vote, it's just a consensus to see where the body stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. All right, so let's take that simple whip as articulated by Counsel. Good one. All right, so those in favor of the motion as stated by Vice Chair, please raise your hand. It would be who would carry. So, but we have not taken a formal vote, so the options before us, I mean, it is, you know, a member can move a motion during any public session. It is for practice not to move them at committee of the whole. A member could choose to amend the agenda this evening to have a vote taken later at our regular business meeting or at agenda setting next week. We can move it forward to the September 16th session for vote. So those are our, our options. All right, so we have a, yes, Commissioner Wheeler, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I do just wanna make it clear that these funds are not gonna go to improve anybody's private property. You can't use public funds for that. It is for storm mitigation. You literally in state law, you cannot use public funds to improve. That's where we're, it's for storm mitigation, which is, can potentially be different. I mean, if you can't use your livable space or your, you know, your property, that's not improvement, that's mitigating storm, issues with storm damage, isn't it?
Yeah, and thank you for clarifying that. It would also be reasonable, I mean, like replacing a tree that been torn out would be repairing damage to the property and may not necessarily address livable space, but maybe we can glean some more information about what the unmet requests look like and have that for consideration when it comes to final vote. Okay, thank you for those comments. Anything further, Commissioners? Commissioner Gessler?
Thank you, Chair. I think I would just as soon see this pushed out to another meeting, not tonight, at another meeting, give us a chance to find out what people feel about it. You know, there's probably gonna be some feedback, I don't know if it'll be, you know, a big deal or not, but it might be and you never know when somebody's gonna hit you right between the eyes with, you know, some verbiage that you say, oh, wow, I didn't think of that. Thank you.
I love it when that happens, when I get to do that with you sometimes, Commissioner Gessler. I'm sure you like it the other way around as well. Yeah, I think that's our preference. We'll bring it back to the 16th for formal action and in the meantime, we can engage in additional dialogue. All right, we're gonna close out this discussion and move forward to our next item, discussion of the reallocation of forfeited ARPA funds from Young Kings and Queens. Again, this is another open discussion. We have opportunity here to address issues as we see fit. One of the potential proposals is to address emergency sheltering this winter. Again, just to sort of refocus the discussion, these funds went to Young Kings and Queens from a specified part of ARPA money that the board had identified to address disproportionately impacted community members. And so certainly, I wanna thank Commissioner Ray for refocusing us to the original intent of these resources. We discussed some capital improvements that they could have been used for, but I think we can refocus them more to their specific intention. And I think there's a potential collaboration with the city of Kalamazoo here to help us with emergency sheltering this winter. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I, first off, thanks Commissioner Ray for, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Ray, for, for focusing back on what these dollars were originally intended for. Chair Scraps, I think this is a great idea. I am a big fan of the, the shelter for, for during the winter months. This is a great bang for your buck. I think it's, it's still that Judy Lowery woman that is, she, she does a fantastic job. I, yeah, I'm a big, big proponent of using, utilizing these dollars in this way. I think we get the most bang for our buck.
And just to, to clarify, and I'll, I'll come to other Commissioners, so what we'll be asking to allocate is $396, sorry, $396,750. This would then likely come up for a request for proposal. And so Heads in Beds is the name of programming or dignity motion. They did some emergency hoteling and servicing last winter. They certainly are probably an interested party that will come forward with a request. Others may also come forward and we may see a number of options in which we can make a determination about what we want. Administrator, do you have anything to add? The city of Kalamazoo is also considering an allocation and my understanding is it's approximately $300,000 and we would collaborate together on a single RFP or would we each be working through them individually?
Yes, Chair, that's a great question and so the process, as I know it, would entail the, the city allocating or it's roughly three, it's probably a little bit over 300,000, our 396,000 through a joint RFP process. What we still need to know is if the board desires that process to be, I'd say, set forth by the, or administered rather, by the COC or if the county board prefers that the county administer the RP through a joint process. But I think that's still, that, that's still a question that's looming out there. Do we want the COC to coordinate it or do we want the county to coordinate it?
Thank you, Administrator. I'll, I'll just suggest that the, the COC being a nonprofit entity does not have to go through the same board process. Sometimes we can cause contracting to lag a bit and we know winter is coming, we're already in September. We wanna see really contracts move out the door by the first of November and I think what gives us the best chance to do that is a collaboration with the COC, but I'm open to feedback from the board. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I'd agree with you, Chair. I think with the emergency shelter and housing, this is something that needs to be done quickly and the, 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 yeah, I think you're right. I think continuum of care would be best situated for this particular task. I do understand Administrator's concern if it was a large housing shelter project or something that was more long-term in nature, but this is, needs to be something that's more agile and quick. So I think the continuum of care would be the best suited for this.
Commissioner Gessler?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I wanna comment twice here. One, I liked the discussion that we're having, I think it's very meaningful and I also would like to salute the people responsible for Young Kings and Queens coming forward now and saying we're not gonna be able to do it instead of waiting till a year from now and we're pressed up against the deadline at the end of that year and, you know, our options then would be very much limited. So I, I wanna thank them even though they're not be able to follow through as they originally planned, they did the bullet and they're giving us an opportunity to do something else with that funding. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioner Gessler, and they remain engaged in good work in the community and I think we are thankful to them and their partnership. Do you have any other comments, Commissioner Ray?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple questions. So is this just for like extreme cold days or is this try to put a plan in place to replace the beds lost at the Kalamazoo Gospel Mission is my first question. And then the second one, the continuum of care, is that just kinda like the same as going through United Way as we have done previously? Okay.
So the United Way is, houses the continuum of care for us? So, but their board process would, the continuum care, separate board and allocations team?
Right.
Would review the RFPs?
Okay.
Yeah.
So would the percentage that they take be the same or Dr. Catlin gonna negotiate so we can, don't spend it all in fees and we can provide some direct line services?
Well, no, that's a great question. As I understand it, I believe their rate is, and don't quote me on this yet, but we can verify, I believe it's actually 15%. So it went up from last year, I believe it was 10%. And now that de minimis is, it's actually illegal for us to negotiate it. So that was written into the CFR, I think it was like late last year, so we can no longer negotiate the de minimis rate any longer with, with the nonprofit.
So and the nonprofit sets it or does statute set top end of a de minimis?
Yeah, so statute sets it at the federal level, so I believe, and I believe it is 15% now. I apologize, yes, Chair. Yes, thank you, Chair, Board of Commissioners. So yeah, so this is intended to support really extreme weather events. So we know during extreme weather events, there are a lot of calls that the Commissioners receive about what are we doing for the unhoused? And so this would be the, kind of the code, would support the Code Blue Plan essentially where we have X amount of days of extreme weather, whether that's heat or cold, in this case it would be cold. And so I believe it's, I, I'd have to look at the plan again, it's not off the top of my head, but I believe it's, I think, three consecutive days of extreme weather, it would activate the plan, then this funding would be utilized to prop up those agencies that are able to support such a, 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 a housing sheltering or centering program.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Thank you, Chair. I do just have one question and we can't necessarily predict it because we don't know how winter is going to be, but is this going to be, I've never had this question before, is this gonna be too much funding? Are we gonna be able to spend this amount down considering that it is ARPA dollars?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Wheeler, Board of Commissioners, so we don't believe that this will, I mean, it likely won't be enough funding. I know last year we had kind of a roadblock with funding in general, so there's never enough funding to support something like this. So we anticipate, right, you know, having this funding available early will hopefully motivate agencies around the county to sort of start getting prepared, so to speak, and then be able to support them as they either center or, or open up a, a shelter for, for unhoused during extreme weather events. And then that way, we can leverage funding from the city, from the county, and then COC also has funding as well available through grant, HUD, HUD grant. So we're hopeful that by approaching this as early as we are, we'll be able to prepare some of these nonprofits to be able to step up and, and help out.
Vice Chair Protem.
Thank you, Chair. I kinda wanna remind the board that this is one-time monies. So if we cover this year, okay, what are we gonna do for next year? So I think pre-planning and as Dr. Catlin's pointed out, this will give them a time to gear up and possibly get these things in place so that we can also look at this down the road for possible future funding or means to help those that we need to deal with. So I, I greatly appreciate this discussion and, but I wanna keep it in our forefront that it's 400,000, that's one-time money and once it's gone, it's gone. So it's not worth, something that we can refill without going into our general fund or someplace else to find it. Hopefully maybe we can find some grants. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Protem. I think it's also important for the community to know, I mean, we do recognize the ongoing need for planning and our housing department is engaged in that process, working on building a, a framework to address issues. The continuum of care is also currently under a, in a process of building their, it's called a plan to end homelessness. They have cons, our consultants who have just begun to endeavor in the update of that plan. So there's work both at the county and in the nonprofit sector, working to plan out long-term, but we know it needs resourcing and that certainly is part of the ongoing discussions that we're having with funders, with the philanthropic community, we're thinking about how we strategize around the housing millage. I would like to see some information about what will be included in the RFP. I think, you know, we address extreme weather events within our emergency plan at a certain level, but really anytime it's below 45 degrees outside, it is a threat to the health and well-being of someone who's outside exposed to the elements. So I would like to see some flexibility within the RFP provided so that we're not just looking at 20-degree below events if we have the opportunity to prevent additional harm to, to people exposed to the weather. I think it's in our interest to do that. Do you have anything further? Okay, all right. Take us, our next is a first reading and presentation. I'm gonna invite forward Planning and Development Director Rachel Grober. We're gonna hear about our Kalamazoo County Housing Tax Increment Financing Policy. Welcome, Director.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Protem and Commissioners. The draft Housing Tax Increment Financing Policy or Housing TIF policy that was provided to you today was developed by the Housing Department and the Planning Department. We have elements of this draft policy that we need your discussion and input on and this is the first draft, so we're hoping to hear some, some questions and conversation today. Does Dina have a slide, presentation? There's just a few slides, short slides, hopefully. Okay. Well, I, I can just get, get really started. The, the first slide is, is just trying to talk about why, why this policy. And essentially it's to establish some, some definitions and eligibility that a Um, and essentially it's to establish some, some definitions and eligibility that align with local housing needs and goals. And also, um, following the conversation that was had during the approval of the first housing Brownfield TIF project in Pavilion Township that, that, um, occurred in April. This policy was developed with that, that conversation in mind and, um, in the housing, housing priorities. Um, so I just wanted to, to provide that. So that was the first slide. Uh, can you go to, uh, the two slides, I guess? Next slide and then the next one. Okay, thank you. So, basic highlights from the policy and, and what we're looking for feedback on is, um, their, the first section is just, um, providing some definitions based on state guidelines and the state legislation. Um, and then the, the next part gets into, um, affordability for rental units, uh, where we currently have proposed in the policy of 20% of rental units at below 80% of the area median income. And then for sale units at with 20% of the units below 120% of AMI. Um, also for those for sale units, um, as, as part of the conversation that we had in, back in April, um, to have homeowners that purchase the for-sale homes have deed restrictions in place over periods of time. Um, with limits on the amounts of the equity available, um, at a percentage of the subsidy that there, that was, uh, is realized. Um, depending on the number of years they, they're owning the home. So that is done across a lot of affordability programs. So we wanted to, to add that to this, this policy as well. Um, the next slide please. So, so as I mentioned, we need your input on if those affordability units are, are what this body is, is you know, comfortable with or would like to see in a policy, um, for the rental and for sale units, the percentage of the total units at, at affordable. And then the, the commitment periods for the homeowners for the for-sale homes. And then the last thing that was highlighted in the policy that was provided to you is, um, for consideration for projects without affordable units. Um, there is possibility of applying for a waiver, but also would there be an interest in having a community benefits agreement? Like in lieu of having affordable units to go into an affordable housing fund? So that is one of the items we would like some input in as well. Um, so the next slide. Uh, so, uh, just as a, as a note, the, this policy was shared with the Kalamazoo County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority last week. And I believe they have provided, they provided, um, some comments back to us and I think to the County Commission as well. And I do have Macy Walters here who can touch on that, uh, maybe following some questions, the Brownfield Administrator. And also Willa, uh, De-Toronto with, um, the Deputy Housing Director is here as well. So we can open up for conversation and questions.
Vice Chair.
Yeah. Has there been any conversations with the people that put these, uh, deals together? On the input of this?
Macy? Macy, please.
Yes. Hi, um, Macy Walters, Brownfield Administrator. I'll just go ahead and say for this board and of course, uh, the public as well who are watching. The Brownfield Authority Board is made up of various develop, uh, various professionals within the development field, lawyers, attorneys, uh, development professionals, as well as environmental consultants. And so some of the members who, uh, do make these Brownfield plans and strategize these, uh, negotiations have weighed in uh, as members of the Brownfield Board. Uh, and so I will just go ahead and I've got about four main considerations that I would like this board to think about, if it's okay that I just say those at this time. Okay. Um, so one, one idea with, um, Public Act 90 of 2023, that was the housing, uh, TIF legislation added to Act 381, um, for the Brownfield law. And so this tool is one that does target the workforce housing, um, section in our housing continuum. And that is, uh, defined as affordable with the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And their term for affordable is 120% AMI or below. So I do know that there can be varying opinions or definitions of what, um, a municipality may count as an affordable, um, qualifying percentage. So I'd just like to say that the intention of this tool, uh, Public Act 90 of 2023 is to, um, create more workforce housing uh, in the community as well. So I would like that, um, consideration to be weighed when it comes to some of these development deals and structuring these deals. Um, the intention of this tool is to take a focus on that 120% to 80% AMI. Um, another consideration that was, uh, brought forward by the Brownfield Authority is just for this board to weigh in that there are multiple, uh, Brownfield Authorities within the county itself. The city of Portage has one, the city of Kalamazoo. So if the county does want to entertain a housing TIF policy, they should be aware that, um, although you can recommend this policy to other BRAs throughout the county, it really is only enforceable to the County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. So if you choose to set, um, limitations below what the state minimums are for some of these affordable, um, percentages, you will, um, possibly be limiting some development, um, specifically just for this county BRA. So we would like you to at least consider that option when you negotiate, uh, what affordability percentage you would like to see on these housing plans. Um, and then specifically for the rental, uh, percentage, uh, just based on some metrics that the KCBRA has seen, I'm sorry, the County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, uh, has seen for some of these plans is that 80% restrictions are lower for rental, may not be as useful of a tool. Um, it, you know, trying to get some of those potential development loss calculations to shake out, um, in the deal might be more difficult. And it might, um, might make it harder to fill some of those rental units. Uh, because right now, uh, it's about somebody who makes about 50K a year, give or take a couple thousand here or there. And right now, um, their opinion is that pool of people is kind of low. So they would like you to consider within this policy to keep it at the state minimum of 120% or lower. Um, and of course, this is a working draft, so I would be happy to support or support, supply this board with any additional resources that they would like to consider related to rental metrics and the way these are factored into, uh, deal negotiations. Um, and then also the last point is that, uh, there is an option for waivers of affordability, uh, within this policy. And so the, the KCBRA did, did have the idea that it is possible that many developers might submit waivers for all sorts of things and want requests for certain projects. So, uh, deciding how to vet each one of these projects could be a little bit administratively complicated to try to decide who gets a waiver for what, um, one way or another. Um, and then if it is a requirement for a developer or a project, a housing development to apply for the housing millage, that's not what this policy is saying. That it says saying that they have to apply for the housing millage dollars, but it is stating that they should at least consider a way to, um, seek out affordability and possibly use the housing millage. If so, uh, we should consider the development timelines and when applications are approved or submitted through the housing millage and see how that might, um, delay some of these projects fail to start and just have an overall impact on the, um, planning process for the total development. Um, those were all of my considerations.
And I wanted to make a, a comment about that. I don't think that was the intent when we wrote that policy. So that Willa and Macy and I had to talk about, we, we could clean up some of that where that's not a requirement. That was, uh, an understanding that some of the Brownfield Authority, uh, members had. I don't think that was the intent to require that they applied to the housing millage specifically, um, more to give reasons why they don't have, they're not supplying affordable units if they're doing a waiver. Um, was there a reason and what, you know, was it not that year that they're not supporting, like the housing millage can support single family or afford or multi, multifamily? What was the reason maybe that they were not applying to the housing millage or seeking other, um, funding sources for affordability? We wanted to hear those reasons in a waiver. That was more what we were intending.
And also within, um, the Brownfield Plan itself, um, if a housing project does not include affordable housing, we would also like this policy to address that there should be a statement within these Brownfield Plans that say why they are not, um, attributing to the affordable housing, um, that and which part of the housing continuum they are able to support and how many units they're adding to the overall attainable housing goal, uh, for that continuum.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, I guess I'll just re-ask the question. Um, was there anybody that puts these deals together, um, involved in putting this policy?
Uh, no. So this policy, um, was put together by the two, um,
Housing and Planning Department.
Yes, Housing and Planning Department. And then they did have, uh, myself weigh in. And what I did is I did have, uh, the Brownfield Authority's Environmental Consultants, their Housing TIF Committee, that committee does put these deals together. Uh, they're a third-party consultant. Um, and so we use their input to help, um, go through this document, but they did also have some considerations about the 80% AMI minimum.
My, my suggestion to the board would be to try to probably put some sort of ad hoc committee together with people from planning and people that put these deals together, whether it's Michigan Growth Advisors or one or the other. There's only probably two or three companies that do this. Um, their, their input is going to be absolutely crucial to try to do that. And this new act, it's going to create 10 times the owner occupied houses that our housing millage ever will. 10 times. Um, that the, the ability for this to have owner occupied, this is going to have a more profound impact on homeownership in Kalamazoo County than our housing millage will. Far more. Um, just based on the, the, the TIF and how these, these, how this is designed. So I, I think we need to do this right. I think the board is in the right for trying to make sure there's affordability component in it. I think that we should sit down with the people that put these deals together and negotiate with them. And probably they're not going to be 100% happy with what we come up with, but it needs to be something that both sides can live with and that we know that we're going to be able to generate thousands of houses. And not apartments, not subsidized apartments, but actually build homeownership. And that's what the intended legislation of this was back in 2023. So.
Macy?
Um, if I can add to that too, uh, one member of our board who was present at the meeting, um, did have some, supplied an email to you guys with some of our considerations. Uh, he does work for Michigan Growth Advisors. So I think it's important to note that a member of that team has weighed in. And then the Fishback, uh, consultants were the ones for the Housing TIF Committee, a separate organization, also, um, professionals in the field who write these plans too. So, so far we do have two different teams on it. So I think that's a great recommendation and I would be happy to be part of that team.
I have, I have a note as well Chair, um, just on the, the last note that, that Vice Chair mentioned. Um, there is a housing plan pending coming forward. So there, there is sort of, there's a timing consideration as well. Um, so if we, if you're looking for doing ad hoc committee, I think we, that would be sooner than later, I think. Um, might be, might be a good idea.
Thank you for that feedback. So, uh, and Vice Chair, I'm going to ask you, you, you see that this will be a tool more likely be used for single occupancy developments rather than multi-unit developments? Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. I think this tool will be mostly for homeownership, single units, um, detached, um, um, units, probably mostly in the township. Now, the idea that they're going to use different brownfields, I'll call their bluff on that. There's no brownfield that has a revolving fund that we have. So that, that's just nonsense. But, but we do have to actually build something that makes sense so that people will use it. Um, I, I, that, so yes, the, the, this, this enacting legislation is going to build single, uh, single-family owner occupied homes mostly.
Thank you Vice Chair. So if it is successful to the scale that, uh, Vice Chair, um, potentially foresees, what is the impact on generating tax revenue? If we have a large number of single-family homes on TIF plans like this, what does that do to our ability to support the infrastructure needed, uh, for those homes, for water, the sewers, the roads? And then, um, well, I'll let you answer that first before I go.
Sure. Uh, so as part of an eligible housing, uh, TIF plan, public and private infrastructure are both eligible costs for reimbursement through this TIF. Um, and it's important to note, it is public and private so that these housing developments who are owned privately can be hooked up to the public, uh, municipal supplies. And then I think, um, I want to weigh in on the fact that it is statute that these housing TIF plans do have to have a community benefit that has to be justified within every plan. And so I'm saying this for the public and for the local units who may be listening in. Um, is that every plan needs to be treated as a case by case and it really, they really do need to think about that community benefit because there are going to be a lot of housing projects that come forward and there's always been housing projects that come forward, right? And because this is a new use of the tool, we need to make sure that those local units who do have their own infrastructure needs and costs, whether it's a non-motorized walking path coming through, whether it's a new street light, a road diet. Um, these municipalities can also be developers within these plans who are eligible to get reimbursed for their own costs that they pay for upfront. And it's important to have these communications and these conversations very early so that we can build that into the plan itself. And so that everybody who had, who is a stakeholder in these projects has an opportunity to be repaid back. And then also you negotiate the timeline of who gets paid back first. And so I do think it's important to note that as well. And then just remind the public that, um, for Brownfield Plans, this is the, the capture is on the increment that the tax, the taxable value increases by. So the potential of a lot of these housing projects, especially if it's a single-family home, the increment does go up quite a bit. You can start a house at, you know, almost a zero-dollar value depending on the situation. And then you're capturing full increment on a $300,000 house or whatever these are, are priced at. So this is a good opportunity for local units to get in early and pay for some infrastructure and get reimbursed through their own local taxes that are already being put into this because a lot of these plans are local with county and local unit taxes going in. Um, if it has an Act 381 work plan, then that's a plan that gets approved through the state where they can capture school operating and state education taxes to, you know, allow that repayment to be a little bit greater and for the Brownfield Plan timeline to be shorter.
That, that's limited on for-sale homes.
And limited on the for-sale.
Because there's a tax exemption for, if your primary residence, tax exemption. So the tax, the state tax is a little bit limited on, on for-sale housing.
Yes.
Commissioner Gessler?
Uh, thanks Chair. Um, I guess I'm referring to the Pavilion Project that I'm most familiar with, it's Abbey 42.
Yep.
And have you come to a way of determining who's going to be responsible for the income verification and how often is it going to be done? Or is that going to be varied depending on who's putting the deal together?
So I'll speak on that specific plan and then I'll make a generalization. Uh, so that specific plan is going to be seeking an Act 381 work plan. So that does have a couple additional requirements that will have to be submitted to the State Housing Development Authority. Mishta is the one who does have to approve that work plan. Um, so there are some additional strings that will go into that. In addition to my generalized statement I'm going to make now is that, um, the Public Act does, um, require that I do the annual reporting every year. It's due by August 31st every year. So on Friday, I was just doing all my annual reports last week. Um, so, uh, it is written into the development agreement that is a mandatory requirement for all Brownfield Plans. And so within that development agreement, it details what date or when the developer has to submit their annual metrics to me. And that talks about number of residential units, infrastructure dollars, improved capital investment, um, all sorts of different details. I'd be happy to supply this board with, um, that information if that was something that you'd like to see as well. Uh, but the long, the short answer is it is the Administrator of the Brownfield Authority who is obligated to do those annual reports. But I do send out notices to all the developers in June of that year. Uh, so we send it out like a year later. So I just did all the reports for 2024, but I required all the developers to get me their metrics by June of 2025 so that I could get my annual reports done in time for August 31st.
I, I guess I'm still not clear, uh, does this mean you or the developer, if I'm a resident participating in one of these, uh, am I going to have to provide you or the developer with last year's tax?
So it, it, it comes at the time of sale. So if it was a rental property, then a lease agreement, um, would be submitted by the developer to me that details the income, um, qualif- qualifications of those who are renting it and what the affordability period, um, is. And it is on the developer to make sure that an income qualified household are in those units. When it comes to a for-sale unit, that does come at the time of sale, the first sale is what is, um, put in there. And then if there are deed restrictions that are put in, uh, that is something that is built into the negotiations of that first sale on that home. And that is the developer's obligation to assemble those materials and then send them to me. So the homeowner, um, or the renter only has those obligations right in the beginning as soon as they sign up for that property, sign up, you know, so to speak, or purchase that property, uh, then it is the developer. If the developer does not supply that information to me, then they are in, um, default on their agreement with us. And then we can hold on to tax increment revenue and not reimburse them until they have proof that they have sold these homes or rented these homes to income qualifying households.
What's the impact though for me as somebody that qualified and I'm participating? And I get a promotion or my spouse goes to work and all of a sudden our household income is beyond the, the limit?
Well, it does have to do with the original signing and right when you're in there, you know, um, yeah, it's, it's a one-time submittal. So when you go to sign that lease or when you purchase that home, that is when you have to submit your income qualification.
Double checking.
As a homeowner, you don't have to submit your income to us annually, uh, for for-sale homes. It is, um, it's a cumulative total. So once we report one sale, we just report the, the sales that happened in the next year and add it to the total. So there's not requirements of the homeowner themselves. But again, if you do sell the home, uh, this policy does detail that there is a loss in that gift of equity from getting that housing subsidy in the first place. And I, I'm not sure what page, uh, that is in your policy, but that is something for you guys to consider as well as if you would like to, um, claw back, so to speak, um, some of those funds. If somebody were to make more money or were to sell it, sell that property, um, for, and, you know, and make a profit off it, so to speak. That is what this policy does detail is, um, a portion of those funds coming back to, um, the county or the BRA to go into a housing fund. to go into a housing fund, uh, to support affordable, uh, homes in the future. So that's, so if you sell it for more, there's within the affordability period. And I think this policy details fifteen years maximum, uh, then they don't get all of the equity on that home. Some of that comes back. Um, so that's something for you guys to consider if that's the parameter you'd like to take with this policy.
Thank you. Thanks for hearing me here.
Absolutely. These are complicated. I appreciate the expertise involved here. Can you help me understand why would we want to endeavor in a TIF plan that waives affordability requirement? What is in the interest to us? And then also I want to understand the impact that this, uh, TIF financing tool will have on infill development versus sprawl? And is there anything we can do within policy to encourage infill? And then finally, just that notation that the pool of, uh, households making fifty thousand dollars is low seems, you know, pretty grossly out of touch. When we look at our housing plan, uh, you know, in consultation with Upjohn, we see the greatest number of units needed in the community at the lowest end of the, uh, income spectrum. And so, you know, maybe certain, um, places in the community, um, have a limited number of people making fifty thousand dollars, certainly not the case in our urban core, uh, where that's above the average income.
So before I address your other questions, I want to, um, make a statement about your last one. So I will go ahead and ask for some additional information on, um, the, so a board member was the one who supplied that comment. And they are one who does work for a firm that writes these plans and does the deal structure. So I would be happy to ask them for some additional information on how they got to that conclusion about it being a small pool of, uh, individuals in that fifty thousand dollar range for the rental. Uh, that was, they're, they were targeting the rental discussion there. Um, but I will see if we can get some additional information, because I just think that'd be good for you guys to see in the public as well the next time this comes back up. Um, but I want to address your first question. Rachel's being great and writing them down for me so that I don't forget them all. But your first question had to do with why would we entertain, uh, housing development that did not have affordable, uh, components into it? So, yeah, so, so that specifically, some of these costs, um, could have significant infrastructure and site prep, um, requirements that would go into redeveloping some of these sites. And so I think that's where you really have to weigh into that community benefit piece and take a look at the local unit of government who is, um, encouraging this development to happen in their area and see if this is a true benefit for that community as the local unit has described. Because sometimes it could involve a road diet or it could involve some sidewalking or some sewer hookups, things like that, that the community can still benefit from, um, you know, even though the housing development itself isn't claiming an affordability component and not trying to get reimbursed for any type of gaps with selling to an affordable home, they may still have significant costs with developing that site that would still help repay it back to that local unit who is benefiting from these infrastructure improvements.
Thank you for that. Just on, again, that waiver of affordability, current policy says that they may need to require or provide a community benefits. I heard you say earlier that a C B was required in all brownfield plans. So can you clarify that language between may and, I mean, is it, they shall provide one or?
Yeah, so I think there's two definitions going on here. This policy details it or says that there may require a community benefits agreement. But I think the intention of this policy was that this community benefits agreement would be an agreement, a formal document made, um, between the developer and the county, whether it would be the developer making a payment to the county in lieu of having affordable units in this development, um, in the county or the B R A, whoever it was that received the, this payment would use it to target affordable housing development, um, in the county. So there is a communit- community benefit that has to happen as described in the plan, but that itself is not a separate agreement. So that's what I mean by two different, um, definitions here is that each housing plan, if it's going to have a housing tip component, does need to be a benefit to the community. And we need to make a statement in the brownfield plan as to why it's a benefit to the community and why the local unit needs it. But separately, if there's additional negotiations beyond the brownfield plan where a, you know, bit of funding needs to come from the developer related to this project to an entity, then that needs to be a more formalized document, uh, that is filed along with the brownfield plan. And it should be mentioned within the development agreement itself as an exhibit within the agreement that the Brownfield Authority would need to make sure this agreement was honored before we issued payment to the developer to make sure that they were still in good standing with the local unit, whoever approved it contingent upon that secondary agreement.
Thank you, and very complex, but why would we not want that all of the time?
I, I have, I, I have one, it, um, the expansion of the legislation. So prior to the expansion, um, the city of Kalamazoo and city of Portage were considered, are considered, still are considered core communities. And they, for any brownfield project, uh, housing or not, industrial project, uh, whatever type of brownfield project it is, they are, they can get reimbursed, a developer can get reimbursed, reimbursed for public infrastructure and certain other eligible costs. Out in the outer parts of the county and the townships, they do not qualify because they're not core community. So the legislation was expanded to address the housing crisis where there may be significant infrastructure needs, like a road put in for a subdivision, for example. So that, that would be why we may consider, um, not having an affordable, they are not requesting, they did not want to have affordable units, but the local unit needs to add a road in order to accommodate this additional housing.
So in essence, then it would encourage sprawl?
Could potentially, or, or it could be in actual zones that, you know, that the, that the county and the community already has in their, their plans and their master planning.
But would have, it already has to be identified in a master plan?
Yeah, it, yes, yes, right. But yeah, so, yeah, do you?
Well, I will very lightly speak on this because it's not public yet.
Well, it hasn't been, the application hasn't been formalized yet.
Yeah, so the Brownfield Authority has been approached by the Kalamazoo County Land Bank, um, to help strategize a scattered site housing TIF plan. And so their application has been approved. But behind the scenes, we are still working on how to write that plan and the complexities that might come along with the countywide plan. Um, because there are certain, there's, you know, oh, there could be potentially over three hundred parcels within this plan. And so it's the kind of thing where it will, some portion of the development will happen in the city of Kalamazoo. Some portion will happen, you know, over in all the rural areas. You know, it truly would be an infill plan. I hope that we get to present that to you guys here shortly. But that is a concept that we are entertaining for infill. But I do know that.
The land bank is still working.
The land bank is still working.
Their specifics, so we haven't seen the brownfield plan yet.
Correct, so that's still, they're still working on that. But that is one idea, one creative way to help reduce sprawl. And I, I should note to this board that that is something that the Brownfield Authority is mindful of. Is the part of Act three eighty-one is the reduction of sprawl. And so we do like to consider that with every plan. So if we seek a green space being taken up with a housing development plan, we really do weigh in on that community benefit piece and try to figure out how this works for the local community who is building this development and whether they've been considered in any type of reimbursement, uh, form for infrastructure and other needs.
Thank you for that, because infill development is a climate mitigation strategy. I mean, the more that we have a dense population, um, and have green space, the better that is for a long-term stability of the existence of human life. One additional question, you talked about, uh, the potential for multi-unit developments at the eighty percent or under affordability threshold. That language about, uh, them considering housing millage funding. I'm also wondering if it would be appropriate or feasible, uh, that these multi-unit developments accept housing vouchers, um, particularly if we identify an opportunity to expand, uh, county-generated housing vouchers. A landlord can have a guaranteed income from a tenant, holding a housing voucher, be individually based and not, uh, project-based voucher. So I, I would like to see language like that strengthened within this policy as well. Along with that, uh, a C B A shall be required if affordability is requested as waived. Vice Chair pro temp.
Thank you, uh, you kind of touched on it, uh, uh, green space, et cetera. Agricultural space is my concern. Uh, also the infrastructure necessary to support, uh, good quality community health and environment, which would be water, sewer, as well as the roads. So, uh, keeping it confined to cities, villages and, you know, uh, is important. I think, uh, that we don't take up all of our agricultural land that is really necessary, only if you want to eat and, uh, kind of survive. So, um, just throwing that out there is just a little thought.
I'd like to add that, um, in my communications with the, with my board, uh, the Brownfield Authority, they treat agricultural in the same mindset as what they deem as green space, you know? Basically, if it's not already a brownfield, if it's not already a product, site that has been developed in the past, because we are in the spirit of redevelopment, uh, so we like to see these properties go back into the tax roll with an increased value and do a public good as well as a benefit for the environment as well. So truly every single project needs to have a creative approach to being able to support affordable development, but then also thinking about that true community benefit of why these projects should be allowed to be supported with housing TIF.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that, that county housing and county planning have been working on, um, a corridor study for the county that we're hoping to present to you, um, hopefully next month. We're still working out the details for the presentation, but that will ho- hopefully, um, help drive some of that, that discussion where there's infill in specific areas. And I think it has some very good information about what that infrastructure cost looks like on really looking at infill zones and corridors for our townships and, and cities as well. It, it really is imperative for us to look at those areas for, um, infill development versus sprawl. Most, a, a lot for infrastructure costs. I mean, it's, it's a little bit eye-opening from some of the stuff we've seen. So we should be presenting that soon. And that can be, you know, drive the housing plan, all of these types of information.
And if I could just add to that a little bit, I think really what it's going to take too is a lot of these local units coming together and thinking about some zoning reforms as well. Taking a look at what is identified through these corridor studies and then considering how we rezone some of these properties that might have, have been sitting vacant for a while. You know, sometimes we've seen industrial property get developed after sitting for twenty years and then the community is upset because they can't walk their dog there anymore, you know? It's like the, the knowledge of making people aware that these have been zoned this way. It's clearly not working for whatever reason. We need to consider some zoning reforms and help use the tools that are available to us now to support, um, housing development activities countywide.
We look forward, I think, to helping convene that dialogue with other local units. Hopefully they're planning, uh, commissions as well as we sort of get a game plan regionally about what to do. Anything further this time? All right, Vice Chair, go ahead.
Really quickly, as you're developing this, um, shoot me an email. I'd love to come and sit down and, and talk this through and have people from both sides of, of, because one, it needs to work. You need to have something that people are going to apply to it and then go out and get these, these businesses and, and submit these plans. And two, the, the chair is absolutely right. If we are putting governmental money and putting, using these tools in place, there needs to be an affordability component to it. So it's a balance, but I, I'd be happy to, to help on that endeavor.
I appreciate the opportunity for the dialogue and for getting our feedback. All right, we will have, uh, further discussion in the future. We'll move to, next we had a first reading, request for approval of proclamation recognizing September twenty twenty, twenty-five as National Recovery Month. And we can read that into the record, uh, at our next regular board session. And we also have a first reading for the proclamation designating September as National Suicide Prevention Month as well. Anything from either, any of the commissioners on either of those items? Okay. All right, with that, we have no close session needed of us this evening. Nothing else before us for now, uh, we are adjourned.